Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, November 4th, and it's 4:37. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do we have any declaration of conflicts today? Seeing none, an approval of our agenda. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Paul. All those in favor. And I should note that we've got resident members, Sen, online. Thank you, Sen, for joining us. And we also have our manager of planning, David Gundrum, as well as our planner, Sonya, is also online. So, welcome, folks. So, moving on, adoption of our minutes from our October 9th meeting. Moved by Bob, seconded by Counselor Beck. All those in favor? Thank you. Anybody rising from those minutes?
Aye.
Yes?
Madam Chair, just a question on the previous board meeting that we had. I had asked for an update on the property at Great George and Fitzroy. And I think someone had indicated that they would do that.
Yep. So, I can send a note to our manager, and just a reminder to give a little update to everybody. Counselor Beck, yes?
I think that was going to come at our committee meeting, Planning Heritage Committee meeting, which we didn't have.
It is, but these members aren't there, so-
I know.
-David had agreed that he would send just out a little email anyways-
Oh, okay.
...just with a little update. But no, you're absolutely right, Counselor Beck.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so we can move right on to our reports. Our first one is with Stephanie, and it's 23 Barden Crescent. So, over to you, Stephanie.
Hi, it's 21 Barden Crescent.
I'm sorry, I didn't know my class.
That's okay. All right, good evening, members of the board. I'll be presenting the first item on the agenda. This application is for a major variance located at 21 Barden Crescent, PID 562413, to allow for an appointment-based home occupation within a residential zone. Additionally, for council to establish the required parking stalls and maximum amount of daily and weekly visits. The subject property is located on an interior residential lot within the single-detached residential R1L zone containing a single-family dwelling. Surrounding properties also consist of R1L zones containing primarily of single-family dwellings. As seen on the proposed site plan, the property has adequate onsite parking for both the home and the home occupation. You can see that it can fit six cars within the driveway. On October 9th, 2025, a total of 43 letters were circulated to surrounding properties advising of the application and requesting comments and feedback. Three responses were received in opposition, and one neutral response was received. These responses were summarized in attachment E of the associated report. Staff analysis of the proposal concluded that there were no negative implications as a result of the proposed home occupation. The property has adequate onsite parking and limited to no impact on the surrounding properties. The business could result in an increase in traffic, however, this can be addressed through setting maximum daily and weekly business visits, and that there be no overlapping customers. And staff's recommendation is that Planning Board recommend that council approve the proposed major variance where the subject property addresses 21 Barden Crescent, PID 562413, to allow for an appointment-based home occupation for a massage therapy business, and request that council establish the approved number of clients permitted to visit per day and a maximum number of business-based visits per week, and the required onsite parking for the proposed home occupation. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think last month, it was Counselor Beck that had a good point when he asked the folks that had the hair salon business what kind of hours they wanted. So maybe we could follow that same, do we know what they want or what they're requiring in terms of hours of operation, or how many days a week clients, kind of thing? Like, do you have a recommendation from them that we could hear about?
They didn't provide- Sorry, through the chair. They didn't provide that to me. So, I can follow up, but I don't think they're here in the meeting today.
Thanks for that. Do you suppose we should just come up with something generic? Yes, Counselor Beck?
Yeah, I don't want to get into generic, because I think what we were trying the last time was, what we had in mind was not what they had in mind. I think what we had in mind was more, if I remember correctly, than what they required. So, I think when we're doing these sorts of things, because there were some in the letters, there were some concerns about parking overflow. There was concern about that there are no curb sidewalks in the area, so that was a, I think if we know, if we have an idea of, okay, well, they're talking this many clients per day, and this many clients per week, and if we have an understanding of that, I think, I don't have a problem with it in principle, but I think if we go back to the one that we, the hair salon, even the one that we had prior to that on Queen Elizabeth Drive, I believe it was, it was helpful. I think it was good helpful information to know what we were looking at. So, that could be, I'm okay in bringing this forward as a recommendation in principle, and then looking for the future numbers in terms of those specifics, because ultimately, we're just a recommending body, and the decision will be made by council. But I'm okay in moving it along in principle as long as the concerns can be addressed.
Through the chair. Just one of your comments, when you're talking about some of the comments that came forward, talking about street parking and curb and whatever, one of my comments is no overlapping customers. So, with the fact that they do have onsite parking, and then restricting overlapping customers, so like, you have a customer, and that customer leaves, then your next one can come. So, you can't have two customers at a time. I think that'll address those concerns. It'll just be one customer at a time on the property, and then with the six parking stalls, so, if they have on site, I think it'll be, I think those concerns will be addressed through that. So, I can put that as a condition on the approval.
Yeah, and we also, though, it does say that the approved number of clients permitted to visit per day and a maximum number of business-based visits per week. So, council still has to do that part.
Yeah.
So, like Counselor Beck said, we could, depending on what this board wants to do, we could approve the recommendation with the caveat that when council receives it, they're also going to have the additional information from you, that, so we know what they want in terms of-
I can obtain that before it goes to council? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. I just have a few other questions, if you don't mind, Chair. On page 23, what is the, there's a proposed vestibule, does that have anything to do with this on the right-hand side there, or is that just an addition that's going on the house, or is that a, does that have any bearing or any influence on this project?
I think it's just a criteria. They have to submit a drawing of their dwelling and the percentage of area that they're using. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Yes, that's correct. They had to show us a floor plan. I'm just going to go to that slide, sorry. And so, that portion of the house already exists. They're just outlining that, hey, this is the portion we're going to use for the business.
Okay.
And, yeah, they'll be, they'll put the business in there. But that portion of the house already exists. It's not a new addition or anything.
Okay. Commercial signage is not allowed in situations like this, or is it not allowed as identified as a concern? But I don't think we allow commercial signage, right?
It is allowed, but there's restrictions on the size. The way I compared, when I responded to one of the comments, I said it would be similar to, like, a bed and breakfast sign, just quite small. It wouldn't be like a flashing sign. Our bylaw allows it. They haven't proposed one by any means, but if they were to submit one, just give me one second, I'll pull up the rules if you can bear with me.
Sure.
Ah, here it is. Okay. It is section 47.2.1. Oh my God, now I lost it again. V. A non-illuminated fascia sign up to a maximum sign area of .45 square meters, which is .48 square feet. May be erected for a home occupation, tourist accommodation, and a home daycare in accordance with the general provisions, unless it's a designated heritage resource. And it doesn't require a permit through that section. Thank you.
4.8 square feet?
4.8 square feet, yep.
Wow, that's pretty small. Okay. Just a question. I know Deputy, you had alluded to this at one time before. We don't know who the applicant is on this one, but in some of the other ones, we do know who the applicant is.
So, I've already discussed that with Mike. So, going forward, the applicant is going to be included in it, because we can't declare conflicts unless we know.
Exactly. Well, that was my point, I was going to make.
Yeah, Mike and I discussed this today. So, going forward, and in fact, we probably should have that, because right now, somebody could be here discussing this, and they're in conflict.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Yeah. So, do we have an applicant's name?
Thank you.
Binley?
Yep.
Okay. And for the people who are submitting, again, some of the signatories on this one were not identified, but on other ones, they were. I think for the public record, I think we should know who they are as well, too, I would think. You don't have to put in their, we can block out their email address or whatever, but-
I don't think that would impact your conflict.
Well, I think it could. I think if you had a, if you had someone who was voicing strong, strongly in favor or strongly in opposition, and you're a very close relative of that person, I think that could be perceived as a conflict, potentially. I think.
If you're that close, wouldn't you know? I just think-
You may not know. You may not get the information from anyone. It could just show up in part of the package.
I think it can also cause, we just have to be careful where it doesn't cause interference of supporting or not supporting based on who is in favor versus who's not in favor. Sometimes that can happen, too. Just a thought. I'm okay with not knowing. We need to know the applicant for conflict, for sure, but that's just my thought.
Well, regardless, we have, in this particular file, we have some who are identified and others who are not. So, what are we doing? Are we identifying them or not identifying them? Personally, I think if, I think we should know. That would be my personal opinion, but we just have an inconsistency happen, so, one way or the other. But I definitely agree on the applicant's side.
So, Mike, can we have a consistency in terms of the letters, and also, going forward, identify the applicant? I see your lights on. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Just further to our discussion today, we'll make a point of adding the name of the applicant going forward for consistency purposes. I don't know that contact information is needed for the, for the purpose of the staff report. Maybe if I just could get some clarity on that?
It's the first time I've had heard of-
Madam Chair?
Identifying the applicant, Madam Chair.
This is the first time that you heard that we're supposed to identify the applicant?
Yeah, I never heard of this. Have you heard this before?
Every, every, for the last seven, for the last seven years, you always have the applicant's name on the form.
Yeah.
And it was just two months ago, we stopped doing that.
Yeah.
And so, it's hard for people to declare conflict if they have no idea who the applicant is.
So, who's going to search through whether this person's in conflict, or this, or another person's in conflict? Who's going to do that? Is it just going to come up on the floor?
It's up to do, it's up for you to do it yourself. But you can't do it yourself if you don't know who the applicant is. We've always had the applicant's name on an application for the last seven years that I've been on planning. So, just all of a sudden, the format changed for consistency, to make the form look the same as the other departments. So, the question came a few months ago, the first time it happened, is that, then they said that they would just put the applicants, identify the applicant in the body of a description, and now it's completely not there. So, Mike and I discussed this, and as Chair, I've just asked that it revert back to the way we've been doing it all along. I don't care. We don't need the names of people that submit letters.
Yeah.
But we definitely need the applicant.
Yeah.
I think that, I think that, yeah. Mike?
Yes, again, thank you, Madam Chair. Just further to that, I don't see any issue in us providing the applicant name for the purposes that you've outlined. And I may have missed this, but I believe there's some conversation about wanting the names and contact info of the people responding to variance notices and that type of communication.
Not necessarily.
Thanks. I think that in the past, what used to be with the letters, the letters would be included in the package, and the addresses would always be removed from that. And I just see now everything's removed. I have no, I don't think we have any issue with that. We don't need to know that. You folks vet those properly to make sure that they're actually real complaints and not just, you know, not accurate. But I think that really going forward, just, even if we just have the applicant, or the applicant's representative, or whoever that might be, and just to ensure for conflict. I'm not sure if you guys want to have further discussion around whether or not we want the letters to go back to the way they were. That's up for the board to have that discussion if they want. Yeah, Bob?
Just on the, on the letters that the department receives from members of the public commenting on individual applications, it's all part of the public record. So, typically, contact info would be removed, but the names themselves are public, so I don't see any issue in us maintaining that practice with both the applicant and any commenting residents having their names included in that package as well.
Great. So, I think that's what Counselor Beck was saying, that he's noticed in this particular case, the names are completely gone from the letters. So, yeah, all right.
Just in some instances. They were included in others. But I agree with Mike. I don't, I think we should be protecting their contact information, but I would, I think it's good to know who's submitting the letter.
Great. Thank you. Sen, did you have a question?
Yes, Madam Chair. It's really about, you know, just on the information. I think the city hall should be mindful about freedom of information and protection of privacy here. Number two, the second thing is that when declaring conflict of interest, you know, I think the PID, the property itself is, information is enough to declare a conflict of interest. Now, if we, you know, for example, you know, just from the PID and identifying the property, you know, if I have a pecuniary interest in that property, I would absolutely be declaring a conflict of interest. But, you know, if we need the names of individuals who submitted, you know, either in favor or in opposed to that, I think, I think in that way, we're unnecessarily attracting further conflict, because, you know, then the person could be a friend of mine, or a relative of mine who is opposed to that, you know. And that's really, you know, as a resident member, I can speak, I can speak on behalf of the council, but as a resident member, you know, that should not be, you know, you know, a responsibility, you know, we have certain responsibilities as members of the planning board to make planning decisions. Now, if my decisions are jeopardized by, you know, or, you know, my personal biases, then that's a completely different story. But whether there is a direct conflict of interest or not, and that can easily be determined by- But whether there is a direct conflict of interest or not, and that can easily be determined by just identifying the property.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, I think Bob still has his light on, so go ahead, Bob.
I just, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify from my own mind. A home-based business, is it only the owner that can work there, or can they hire staff?
I think it's, um, a home-based business is, I think every application is evaluated differently. I think so. Um, but Stephanie?
I'm just pulling this up here. So section five point nine point one D. Um, there's a maximum of one full-time employee or two part-time employees other than the proprietor, working inside or outside of the dwelling. And they cannot exceed that, the, those requirements by contracting work out to other people or employees that are not located in the dwelling. So the way that reads to me, and I'm open to be corrected, is that you have to live in the home to be able to work there. Because it says, no, you can't. Not located, you can't contract at work to people not located in the dwelling. Okay, so you can have one full-time employee or two part-time employees other than the proprietor. Okay, so the homeowner, business owner, can work there and they can hire one full-time aside from them or two part-time. They can have both of them.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else? Because if not, His Worship would like to accept staff's recommendation.
Move.
Moved by His Worship, seconded by Lee. And just a reminder that when this goes to council, we're also going to be included in there, the recommendation for the hours of operation. Okay. So, anyone have any questions?
Resolution's on the floor. Page twenty-eight, there's one of the letters here. We reside at, we received notice from the city of the occupants. And number two here, here are our comments. The homeowner must be the sole person working in the salon. So what you've just said is, Stephanie, is that they can hire someone, correct?
Through the chair, yes. Through the bylaw, they are able to hire one full-time employee or two part-time.
Okay.
I did respond to this email and gave them all this information.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Anyone have any questions on accepting staff's recommendation? If not, all those in favor. Sen?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you for that. And move on to our next, next application. And I believe Sonia is online. This is five sixty-six Malpack Road. Over to you, Sonia.
Thank you and good afternoon, Madam Chair. Uh, this is a major variance request to allow addition to an existing accessory structure, which is a garage located in the rear yard of the property within the single-dutch residential zone. Melissa, can you go to, thank you. Um, next slide, please. Uh, the subject site is surrounded by properties to the north and west that are similarly zoned R1L and are primarily developed with single-dutch residential dwellings. Properties located to the east and south are zoned highway commercial C2 and are occupied by retail stores and eating and drinking establishment. Next slide. In accordance to section three point nine of the zoning and development bylaw, on October nine, twenty twenty-five, written notification was sent to property owners located within a hundred meter of the subject property. A total of eighteen letters were sent to residents advising them of the application to solicit comments and feedback. In response to the city's circulation, letter one, letter of support, and one letter of opposition received till deadline. Next slide. Uh, this is the proposed site plan. Next slide. This is the floor plan. Next slide, please. Uh, as per section four point one point two B of the zoning and development bylaw, accessory buildings on lots between point five and point nine nine acres allow for a maximum number of two accessory buildings with a maximum combined footprint of seventy-eight point nine seven square meters or eight fifty square feet. The proposed addition would result in a total of two accessory buildings with a combined footprint of hundred and sixteen point six eight square meters or, uh, uh, exceeding the maximum or by thirty-seven point seven one square meters or four oh six square feet. As per section three point nine point one of the zoning and development bylaw, where a land use proposal does not involve a rezoning application and a various request is not considered to be substantial, then it is appropriate to evaluate the land use proposal by means of a major variance application. Next slide. Administration received letter of support mentioning that the considering nearby developments, the owner should be allowed to proceed. And administration received a letter of opposition citing concerns, including that the property is zoned R1L, low-density residential, but an illegal twin business is operating there. At least three tow trucks are present indicating active, active business use. A twenty-by-twenty addition could support further business growth. Uh, increased business may lead to more disruption and congestion in the residential area. Garbage burning has occurred on the property and expansion may worsen this issue. Next slide. Staff concluded that there are minimal risks and implications as a result of the proposed development. If the addition were to be constructed, the lot coverage of all combined structure would be less than fifty percent, leaving adequate green space on the parcel. The overall height of the structure will not invade privacy or increase shadowing on the adjacent properties. Additionally, there is minimum impact on the surrounding land use due to proposed addition. So, uh, Planning and Heritage Department encouraged planning board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property addressed as five sixty-six Malpack Road, uh, PID one four five eight oh five be approved to allow for the establishment of a twenty feet by twenty feet addition to an existing accessory structure, which is a garage located in the rear yard of the property within the single-dutch residential zone. This is the end of my presentation, and, uh, the applicant is also present here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Any questions from anybody? Yes, Lee. Okay, so Lee is recommending...
One question before, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead. Paul?
The, um, the person who wrote the letter of opposition mentioned that he or she was concerned about increased garbage burning. There shouldn't be garbage burning in the first place, should there? And, you know, it's a legitimate concern if he or she's concerned about increased garbage burning. I, I wouldn't think that...
I don't think people are allowed to burn garbage on their own properties.
Well, not, not in, no.
Not legally. I mean, gone are the days of the burn barrel.
No, but that, that should, in the decision, in the decision, it should reflect the fact that garbage burning is not, not permitted in the city.
Sonia, do you have any thoughts on that?
Madam Chair, I asked this question to the applicant, and applicant can clarify this if you allow?
I can verify.
Just a second, though. What did you say? I, I didn't hear what you said.
Uh, I asked these, uh, questions to the applicant, and he has clarified this to me, and, uh, he wa- he can clarify this, uh, here if you allow.
Sure, but, but more the question that's coming from Paul is, why would it even be a question? Because you're not allowed to burn. So why would it even have to be clarified? Is, I think, the question that was coming from resident member Paul.
Um, uh, I, I can only confirm that applicant mentioned that he did not burn garbage there.
How many lights on? Okay. Uh, Mike, do you have, I mean, it just seems like, it seems like we're adding things to something that's not gonna happen, and it doesn't seem fair to the applicant that they would even have to justify even that kind of a question, because you can't burn in your own backyard.
Appreciate the question, Madam Chair. Um, I think what our planner was trying to describe is really just that this really isn't within the scope of the zoning and development bylaw. This would be dealt through the, I believe it's the fire prevention bylaw. Um, so it's not something, it really isn't land use related unless it was an industrial, um, zone where we're dealing with, you know, obnoxious fumes and so on. This isn't what we're talking about today, so it really shouldn't be, um, considered, in my view.
And I, and I appreciate that the applicant was, is willing to justify his beha- his, his application, but he doesn't need to. It doesn't even come into play. So, I mean, you're more than welcome to speak on behalf of yourself, but you don't have to speak to that burning question because it's not, it's a moot point.
Yeah, I know. It wasn't, it wasn't garbage. We were burning cardboard with the firewood in a fireplace. So I don't, I don't know why, nobody came over to see if it was garbage or wood or, so.
And I think if you have a fire pit outside, the burning restrictions are up, so I think you're allowed to have a fire pit in your backyard. I mean, yeah. Anywho, I think we'll just move on from that one. Thank you. So Lee has moved that we accept staff's recommendation. Does somebody want to second it? Seconded by Bob Kenny. Um, so the question is, are there any questions on accepting staff's recommendation? Okay, question called. All those in favor. Sen?
Yes, in favor, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we can move on to our next item on the agenda. Thank you, Sonia. Next item on the agenda is our manager, David Gundrum, who's also calling in this evening. And it is, um, lot one sixty, Hidden Valley subdivision, PID one one eight three three five nine. Over to you, David.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My regrets, I can't be there tonight. I, I took ill today and yesterday, so, um, just excuse if my voice is a little hoarse as I go through. Um, I'll just, um, notify Melissa to move the slides forward as we go along. Uh, next slide, please, Melissa. So this is a request, as the chair mentioned, for minor variance, lot one sixty, Hidden Valley. Um, the request more specifically is to allow for maximum building height of sixteen point one nine meters, fifty-three point one two five feet, and an increase in density to forty apartment units on site. Uh, maximum building height for the R4 zone that the property belongs to is otherwise fifteen meters or forty-nine point two feet. Maximum permitted density based on lot size is otherwise thirty-eight units, which would meet the R4 zoning requirements. Next slide, please. Uh, just some context to the site. The existing lot is currently vacant and exists within a newly approved plan of subdivision. Property as shown on the screen is surrounded by R4-zoned lots, which are anticipated to be developed also as multi-residential over the next several years. And it's noted that Malpack Road, which is a major arterial road, is approximately thirty-five meters or one hundred fifteen feet due east of the site. Next slide, please. In accordance with section three point eight of the zoning and development bylaw, on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, a notice of application was circulated to eight surrounding property owners within one hundred meters of the subject property to request written comments on the proposed variance. Uh, no feedback in response to circulation was received. Uh, therefore, based on section three point eight point four of the zoning and development bylaw, since no objection has been received, the application can therefore be approved directly by development staff. Next slide. Uh, just a quick analysis of the request for minor variance. Uh, some positives. Uh, proposed variance would not generate any negative off-site impacts. Uh, proposed variance would increase local housing supply beyond what current zoning allows for. A neutral comment is that a building and development permit would be required to accommodate the development under building code in the future. And a quick shortcoming is that the proposed development exceeds the current limits of the R4 zone as, as it applies to the site. Uh, next slide, please. A recommendation, therefore, is that planning board recommend that planning staff approve the proposed minor variance for the subject property identified as lot one sixty in the Hidden Valley subdivision, PID one one eight three three five nine, uh, to increase the maximum number of apartment units on the site to be forty units, whereas current maximum density under zoning would allow for thirty-eight apartment units. And secondly, to increase maximum allowable building height to be sixteen point one nine meters, fifty-three point one two five feet, whereas current maximum building height under zoning is otherwise capped at fifteen meters or forty-nine point two feet as per the R4 zone. Uh, so that is a summary of the request, our recommendation. And I'll just note for the board that, um, typically, we don't bring minor variance applications forward where they're uncontested, uh, but we have been doing that lately just as a courtesy for the board's information. Uh, so I'll turn it back over to the chair and happy to answer any questions on the presentation and the application. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I just speak to this? Madam Chair, is this, I thought this was the same property that we approved a concept plan for six, no, sorry, ten apartment buildings, six stories, correct? It was sixty units, six stories? And so that concept plan was approved by a vote of council, but a minor variance without any... David, did you say there were no objections to it?
Uh, through the chair, correct Your Worship, we receive, we received no response to the circulation, either positive or negative.
And is that a change in policy that we, that we agreed to? I don't remember. I thought minor, Madam Chair, just, I'll finish. I thought the minor variance was that if there was no, there was no, uh, opposition or any letters of discontent, that it would be just a departmental matter.
And that's what it is. It doesn't, it doesn't have to come here. As David just pointed out, he's just doing it as a courtesy, but I think with files, we have enough files that we don't need to be bringing things here unnecessarily. Did, David, did we hear you wrong? Like, minor variances are approved by staff if there's no, if there's no contention. So why is it here?
Uh, correct. Through the chair, um, this can, again, we, I'm only brought this forward just for the board's information, so they're aware that this request was received and that staff will be moving to approve it. Today was the last day for public response, so after today, uh, we're just gonna move directly to, to approving the application. This is essentially just a report and presentation for the board's information as a courtesy.
And I appreciate that, and that's great, but we've never, like, minor variances, unless there's contention, don't come here. And so it seems like, it seems like unnecessary time for everybody, correct me if I'm wrong, um, that it's even here. Because if it's just for information purposes, I mean, people would see that in the permit lists coming out every month. But unless I'm missing something, David, I just don't know if they're necessarily supposed to even be here.
Uh, through the chair, you're, you're correct, Chair Yankoff. We, we didn't have to bring this tonight. And again, uh, this was at my discretion just to make board aware of this application and that we'd be approving it, um, based on direction given in the bylaw.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, David. I, I don't, I actually don't mind getting this because I had the same question as, as Worship. Um, and is this, because I think we approved ten sixty-unit apartment buildings, did we not? I have six hundred units.
Yes.
I see Will is here. Is that what? That's what we, that's what we approved. I, I don't know if it's necessary now, but that's what we approved, right? So is this one of the ten slots that we, so now we're down to nine? Like, is this? So is it changing from sixty to forty? Is, I guess that's what I'm wondering is, are we going to, because I guess you, we approved up to sixty. So we're saying you could build up to sixty, so now are they scaling that back to a forty-unit apartment building instead of a sixty-unit apartment building? So that's, that's kind of what I'm, that's kind of what I'm wondering. Is this one of the ten sixties that it's now being scaled back to a forty?
David?
Uh, through the chair, uh, no, what you're referring to is... Through the chair, no, what you're referring to is a different area that was zoned CDA, that was under a concept plan. This is under R4, which does have inherent limitations written into the zone. And on that basis, the applicants, which is Arsenal Brothers, which brought this application forward, they caught that they were exceeding height and exceeding density based on the R4, and it's for that reason that we had to run, run a variance request. They were within the tolerances of a minor variance, that it didn't tip over into a major variance, which is why we were, how we were able to go that route. So I, I hope that clarifies Counselor Beck on your question and, and also your worship.
Dave's not privy to this, but there seems to be some head shaking going on here, so I, you, Madam Chair, if it's okay, could we hear from Will if he wants to come up? And if there's anything that needs to be clarified, or Laurel wants to clarify anything there, I'm a little bit more confused than I
As long as the clarification is speaking to, like, we're not even going to vote on this variance. It's for information purposes only. We're not even going to vote on it. Like, I'm not calling a vote, because it's not supposed to vote. So we can get as much information as we want, absolutely, Counselor Beck. So Laurel, if you have more to share, for sure, that's great, or we can call on the devolved
Just for information purposes, this is phase three of Hidden Valley subdivision. We rezoned it to R4. The, the lots were originally 10 lots, but we did do some re-subdividing of some of the lots within the phase. Will Safaris is here. He's the developer of the subdivision, so he might be able to give you a little more information than I can, if you would like to speak to him.
And that's great, as long as the information is not going to confuse the matter, that we're not even supposed to be voting on this application. So, Will, you are more than welcome to speak, but we don't have, we don't, we don't have the option to approve or disapprove your project. It's already been approved by, by staff.
It's not my application, it's up here. I can't
Oh, okay. Okay. I think we should just move on. I think we're going to just move on. Is that good with everybody? Yep, thank you. I told you, I didn't mean to put you on the spot down there. Mercy. All right. So we are moving on to the next item on the agenda, and that's Laurel, and that is 3 Oakland Drive. So over to you, Laurel.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. This is a request to rezone PID number 192245, the former Andrew Homestead on Oakland Drive. The property is currently zoned R1L, single detached residential, and has land area totaling approximately 9.29 acres. The request is to rezone from single detached residential, R1L, to institutional I. And also to amend Appendix A, the official plan map for PID number 192245, from low density residential to institutional. So the purpose of the request, Holland College, they've asked for the property to be rezoned to institutional to enable them to utilize the property for educational programs. The college intends to use the site in the short term for college programming, office space labs, and accommodations for guests of the college. And the long-term use will be for a dedicated space for the Center of Excellence for watershed management. And as you are probably all aware, Dr. John Andrew and Christine Andrew gifted the property to Holland College about four years ago, in 2021, I believe. So the subject property is in a mature residential neighborhood on north, on the north side of St. Peters Highway in East Royalty, and the surrounding neighborhood consists of low-density, single, and semi-detached dwellings. The property is bounded to the north by low-density residential housing consisting of R2 zoning in Oakland Drive. So R2 up here, and then we have Oakland Drive, where the roundabout is, and also comes down around here. To the east by low-density housing, R1L zoned land and Oakland Drive as well. So R1L housing, and then we have Oakland Drive. And to the south by Wright's Creek, which is just down here, the watershed. And to the west with passive recreation land and West Cone Crescent. So passive recreation here in the dark green, and then we've got West Cone Crescent with additional low-density development. So the property is the former Andrews Homestead, and it's a designated heritage resource under the city's heritage bylaw. It's located on Wright's Creek, which is a major estuary, and it's rich in flora and fauna, and the home to many wildlife species. The property also contains Andrews Pond and a stand of old growth Acadian forest. There are passive recreational trails around the pond, many of which were granted to the city by the Andrew family, and therefore this property is well positioned for its intended use as a center for excellence in watershed management. This is the site plan showing the parking, which they will add, and the original homestead, and then the garage. So the zoning and development bylaw, section 3.103, states that before amending the regulations of the bylaw or rezoning any parcel of land, council shall conduct a public meeting to receive the views and opinions of the public and the applicant. Council may also, for reasons that are in the best interest of the city, reject a proposed amendment to this bylaw without public notice and without referral to a public meeting. So the OP has various policies which supports the needs of the city's public educational institutions, their physical space and land use requirements, and I've included them within the report. I've also noted some of them here on the slide. So our, our objective is to establish a regular dialogue with representatives of the business community, the provincial government, the University of Prince Edward Island, and Holland College in the Eastern School District. Our policy shall be to meet with representatives of the province and the city's educational institutions on a regular basis to address and seek mutual resolution to any outstanding issues. Our objective is to work with representatives of Charlestown's educational institutions to ensure that they are present, and future physical space and land use requirements are factored into the city's planning process, and our policy shall be to encourage representatives of the city's educational institutions to advise the planning board of their physical space and land use requirements, and we're warranted to ensure the municipalities' planning tools take into account these needs. Our policy shall be to designate sufficient additional land on future land use map to meet the anticipated needs of the city's public educational institutions over a 10-year planning horizon. So in conclusion, this is a historically significant property within the neighborhood of East Royalty, and the Andrew family have been instrumental over the years in environmental stewardship of Andrews Pond and Wright's Creek, and have worked with the city and local watershed management groups to ensure the sustainability of the watershed and old growth Acadian forest on the property. Rezoning the property to institutional will bring it into conformity with the future use as an educational institution. And from a land use perspective, educational institutions and residential uses are generally compatible. Educational institutions can contribute to the vibrancy and cultural richness of a community. And staff are of the opinion that this request has merit. It meets many of the policies and objectives of the official plan and many of the technical requirements of the zoning and development bylaw as well. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Oh, I'm sorry. Our recommendation is to proceed to public consultation. Sorry.
Thanks, thank you, Laurel. Does someone want to put the resolution on the floor before we discuss it? Okay, moved by his worship, seconded by Counselor Beck, that we accept staff's recommendation to move on to a public consultation. So any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor. Sen?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you for that. We can move right along then. Next item on the agenda is, back over to you, Sonya. It is Violet Circle, Lot 8. So over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a public consultation to, to change the official plan land use designation from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and rezone subject property from low-density residential R2S to medium-density residential R3. Next slide, please. The subject property is a vacant lot that forms part of what would be considered a greenfield or new subdivision development that is currently still under construction and expansion at the present time on the basis of prior approval. Most of the properties within the existing plan of subdivision in this area are currently zoned R2S, which allows for residential drilling in the form of single detached, semi-detached, and displaced dwellings, but does not have any allowance for stacked townhouse drilling as proposed. Next slide. If the proposed zoning bylaw amendment and accompanying official plan amendment are approved to proceed to the public consultation phase, the planning and research department will notify the public of the future public meeting date in accordance with section 3.10.4 of zoning and development bylaw. Next slide. This is the proposed site plan. Next slide. These are floor plans or the unit plans. Next slide. These are the top two units. Next slide. As per section 3.10.3 of the zoning and development bylaw, before rezoning any parcel or lands, council shall conduct a public meeting to receive the views and opinions of the public and applicant. Council may, for reasons that are in best interest of the city, reject a proposed rezoning without public notice and without referral to a public meeting. But if an application goes to a public meeting, then council should determine the disposition of the application, and applicant may not be allowed to withdraw the application after the public meeting. Planning staff are of the opinion that the project has merit with sufficient information provided to date by the applicant to allow for consideration of the proposed rezoning and official plan amendment via the public meeting process with council. Next slide. The planning and research department encourages planning board to recommend to council that the following rezoning and official plan amendment request for the subject property identified as lot 8 Violet Circle, PID number 778308, proceed to public consultation to rezone the subject property identified as lot 8 Violet Circle, 8778308, from the low-density residential single, R2S zone to medium-density residential R3 zone, and also change the land use designation in the city of Charlestown official plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential to facilitate development of 40 unit stacked townhouse drilling. Thank you, and I can answer any question.
Thank you. Does someone want to put a, a resolution on the floor? Okay, moved by Dave, seconded by Counselor Beck, that we accept staff's recommendation and move this on to council for public consultation. Does anyone have any questions on the resolution? All those in favor? Sen?
In favor.
Great, okay, thank you for that. We can move along to our next item on the agenda, and that would be over to you, David. And that is, or is that you, Laurel?
Which one is it?
No, it's David. It says you on the, on the, on the application, or on the agenda, but it says him on the bookmarks, so.
Yes, Madam Chair, is it Stan Mall?
Stan Mall.
It's me.
Okay, all right. Over to you then.
So, this is a request to proceed to public consultation to rezone a portion of Phase Two of Hidden Valley subdivision at the south end of Stan Mall Drive, a portion of PID number 1047562. The proposal is to rezone the subject lands from R2S low-density residential single to R3 medium-density residential zone, and to amend Appendix A, the official plan future land use map, from low-density residential to medium-density residential. The purpose of the request is to rezone approximately 1.08 acres, 4,392 square meters of land located at the southern end, end of Stan Mall Drive. So this is the subdivision plan showing it. The proposal is to rezone the property to R3 medium-density residential zone and extend Stan Mall Drive and further subdivide the property into three lots to accommodate two stacked townhouse buildings consisting of 12 units in each building. Stan Mall Drive is proposed to be extended to the southernmost property boundary, and the dwellings will be constructed on the east and west side, lots 29 and 32, shown on the preliminary survey plan. So this is lot 32 and lot 29, the two townhouse dwellings are here, and then this lot would remain as R2, and then the road extended to the property boundary with a cul-de-sac for turning purposes until it's later extended into the adjoining property. So the property is bounded to the north by Brooklyn Avenue and new low-density residential housing consisting, consisting of R2S zoning. So right here. And to the east by a water course that separates this area from land that has been zoned apartment residential, R4 for higher density development. So this is the R4 property, and there is a water course right along here. And to the south with vacant land zoned R2S, this piece of property here, also known as the Rhineus property. And to the west with land zoned R1L with low-density, single detached housing. So low-density here, and then you have lower Malpec Road further west. So Hidden Valley subdivision is located off Malpec Road in the neighborhood of Winslow. The immediate area consists of low-density residential development with land that was zoned to accommodate higher-density apartment dwellings immediate to the, immediately to the east. There is also some higher-density and commercial development further north along Malpec Road. Low-density residential development in the immediate area consists predominantly of mature neighborhoods containing R1L, single detached residential, and R2S low-density residential single zone properties. And there are shopping centers and services located within a kilometer to the south of the subdivision along Malpec Road. This is a rendering of concept of the proposed townhouses, stacked townhouses. And before amending the regulations of the bylaw or rezoning any parcel of land, council shall conduct a public meeting to receive the views and opinions of the public and the applicant, and council may, for reasons that are in the best interest of the city, reject a proposed amendment to this bylaw without public notice and without referral to a public meeting. And I have included key points from the official plan for consideration within the report. They're mainly pertaining to housing needs and variety and providing additional housing types within neighborhoods. I've also included policies within the report on utilizing services that are in the area, such as wastewater and water. So making efficient use of existing services within neighborhoods through density. So the proposed site is within walking distance to parkland and neighborhood amenities. The site is not within close walking distance to shopping centers. However, these amenities are easily accessed with T3 transit services. A variety of housing choices are important within a neighborhood. Charlestown's low vacancy rate has presented challenges for people trying to access housing within the city and fully serviced desirable neighborhoods where they are able to access various amenities. And establishing new density in housing variety in existing built-up areas is inherently more sustainable, as it allows for better use of services that are already available, and decreases pressure for new urban sprawl related to single detached subdivisions. So staff are of the opinion that this request is merit and meets many of the policies and objectives of the official plan, and we are recommending for approval to proceed to public consultation on the bylaw amendment and the official plan amendment. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and the applicant is also here, Will Safaris. If you'd like and the um applicant is also here, Will Safaris, if you'd like to speak to him.
Thank you. Does anybody want to put a a motion on the floor first to accept? Okay, moved by Lee, seconded by Bob, that we accept staff's recommendation to move on to council for public consultation. Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor? Send?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you for that. We can move right on to our next item, Mina Jane Drive. And Laurel, I believe that's you again.
Thanks, Will.
Okay. So, um, this is a request for a law consolidation to convey a portion of PID number three eight eight two eight oh and appended to PID number one one zero six four two, which are vacant lands located off Mina Jane Drive. The properties are located in the highway commercial C two zone. This is the subject property. The purpose of the request, um, the law consolidation is to assemble lands to facilitate a storage yard for products associated with the existing Rona Hardware Store. Currently, retail storage is being accommodated in the existing parking lot, which occupies existing parking spaces. And um relocation of this retail storage will free up parking that is required for retail uses. So they are using some storage in this area now, and um, this is the proposed uh new storage area that they will be appending. The subject properties are located in a shopping center consisting of large box store developments, storage facilities, and multi-unit housing. This area of the city has been developed over the past 20 years as a retail hub within the city. Um, and the shopping center is accessed off Malpeck Road, a major arterial route route via Daniel Drive. Um, the property has approximately 65 feet of accessible road frontage on Mina Jane Drive. Um, if you look right here, just this area right here, it looks tiny, but it actually is adequate frontage. And um, uh, though not accessible, the property also has um legal road frontage on Malpeck Road and the TransCanada Highway. So, um, it fronts along here and then also on the bypass, which is on um not accessible because of arterial roads. So, the proposal is to convey parcel A, which is 9,517 square meters, 2.28 acres um in size, and it's shown on the survey plan, and the uh it will be appended to PID number one 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 oh six four two. So, this is parcel A, and then the remainder here is um the remaining parcel it will get appended to. So this will form one large parcel. And just uh for context, that this is the former Sears building, so that kind of gives you an idea of the the amount of land area we're dealing with. So, section forty-eight point three four A of the zoning and development bylaw explains that the development officer may give approval for law consolidations where dwelling may be constructed in an R one or R two zone. And in light of the fact that the proposed law consolidation is in the commercial, the highway commercial um C two zone, the law consolidation must be approved by council. So, um, in conclusion, the properties are located in a um highway commercial C two zone. The area of the city is zoned to allow for expansion of retail services and their associated uses, and it's staff's opinions that the approval of this consolidation is compatible with the zoning and development bylaw and official plan. And therefore, planning and heritage department are encouraging planning board to recommend to council for the request to consolidate PID number one one oh six four two with a portion of PID number three eight eight two eight oh to form one parcel subject to a final PIN survey plan. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, as well.
Thank you, Laurel. Any questions? Yes. Okay, moved by councillor Beck, seconded by Lee, that we accept staff's recommendation to move this on to council. Any questions? Question called. All those in favor? Send?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. We'll move right along um to the um next um agenda item, two dash six Alice Road, um, lot consolidation. David, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, next slide, please, Melissa. Uh, the following is a request for consolidation of subject properties identified as two dash six Alice Road, PID three nine six four oh eight, and twenty-seven dash twenty-nine Brackley Point Road, PID three nine six three nine zero, to create a new lot that would be 1.22 hectares or 3.01 acres in size in the mixed-use corridor M U C zone, uh, would have 355 feet of frontage along Alice Road to the south and 143 feet of frontage along Brackley Point Road to the east. Uh, the owners have made this request to reconcile issues with internal lot lines and existing buildings, not meaning prescribed setbacks. The lot consolidation is therefore being pursued purely in the interests of legal and technical reasons to consolidate the owner's current holdings under one land title, and it's noted that no immediate development or redevelopment um of this of the combined site is is planned or proposed. Next slide, please. Uh, just some further context to the site. The subject properties are located in a mature mixed residential and commercial neighborhood on the west side of Brackley Point Road. Uh, property is bounded to the north by low-density residential housing in the R one L and R two zones and to the east by uh R three-zoned lands. Next slide, please. As per section forty-eight point three point four point A of the zoning and development bylaw, only lot consolidations where properties are found within either the R one or R two zones can be directly approved by the development officer. All other forms of lot consolidation by default require consideration by and recommendation to planning board and council. In the case of lands zoned as R three and R four, a written notice is required to be sent to property owners within 100 meters of the subject properties. In this case, as none of the subject lands involved are within either the R three or R four, uh, no written notice was sent to nearby landowners as per the zoning and development bylaw. Next slide. Uh, just a summary of uh positive, neutral, and shortcomings of the application. Some positives, uh, the lot consolidation has potential to enable higher forms of development and intensification in future along a main commercial corridor by eliminating confounding internal lot lines. Subject properties are centered within an identified commercial hub as per the existing city official plan. Neutral comment is that any future development would require a building development permit and potential discretionary planning act approvals depending on the nature of a future proposal. Um, short noted shortcoming is that no immediate development proposal has been provided to directly inform specific need for the proposed lot consolidation uh beyond the noted legal and technical reasons. Next slide. Uh, just a summary of our analysis. Uh, the official plan has various policies that support the needs of the city's main commercial corridors, of which Brackley Point Road can be considered as being part of. While section four point three point two B of the East Royalty Master Plan makes the following statements, which apply specifically to the East Royalty Neighborhood Area, it is still a statement that can be cross-applied to additional areas of the city based on first principles and good planning. Uh, quoting from that section, in order to improve the economic viability of commercial centers, consolidation of properties is encouraged to ensure functionally obsolete structures are renovated or removed and a more efficient and intensive utilization of land is achieved. It is noted that the subject properties are all designated as commercial or village-centered commercial under the current official plan and are also identified on the official plan map as forming part of the Sherwood Suburban Center, which is intended to function as a local uh commercial hub for the wider residential and mixed-use area surrounding it. Next slide. In conclusion, subject property exists within a well-established neighborhood in a mature area of the city where the subject property has contributed in regard to housing supply and commercial use for many years. As noted, the proposed lot consolidation and elimination of internal lot lines on the site has potential to unlock further development potential in future along a busy corridor connecting the Sherwood area of the city to the downtown. It is noted through land title search that the subject properties have remained under the same ownership since at least the 1980s and are expected to remain so into the immediate future. The proposed lot consolidations can therefore be deemed as legal or technical in nature to unlock possible uh development potential in the future. Next slide. And just to conclude, our recommendation to planning board, uh, the planning and heritage department encourages planning board to recommend to council to allow for the request to consolidate the lots identified as two dash six Alice Road, PID three nine six four oh eight, and twenty-seven dash twenty-nine Brackley Point Road, PID number three nine six three nine zero, to form one parcel subject to a final PIN survey plan. Uh, so that is summary of the application for lot consolidation and our recommendation, and I'll turn it back over to the chair for any any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anybody want to uh, any questions or put a resolution on the floor? Councillor Beck, moved, seconded by Bob. Um, so the resolution's on the floor to accept staff's recommendation. Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor? Send?
In favor.
Great, thank you. And on to our final um application for this evening, 156-158 St. Peters Road, another lot consolidation. Over to you, David.
Thank you, Chair. And uh, next slide, please, Melissa. Uh, this is a request for lot consolidation at 156 dash 158 St. Peters Road involving PID numbers three eight five six five eight and three eight five five seven five. Uh, request is to sever a portion of the unaddressed property located to the east identified as PID three eight five five seven five to be consolidated with the abutting lot identified as 156-158 St. Peters Road. The owners have made this request to reconcile issues with internal lot lines as well as operational use of an existing storage and maintenance building that is proposed to be added to the property at 156 dash 158 St. Peters Road. Uh, the lot consolidation is therefore being pursued purely in the interest of legal and technical reasons to consolidate the owner's current holdings under one new land title. Uh, no immediate development or redevelopment plan uh is proposed. Next slide. Uh, just some further context to the site. Subject properties are located in a mature mixed residential commercial neighborhood on the east side of St. Peters Road. Property is bounded to the north by medium-density seniors-oriented housing in the institutional zone and to the south by a mix of residential uses in the R two zone as well as a community health center in the institutional zone. Next slide, please. As per section forty-eight point three point four point A of the zoning and development bylaw, only lot consolidations where properties are found within either the R one or R two zones can be directly approved by the development officer. All other forms of lot consolidation by default require consideration by and recommendation to planning board and council. In the case of lands zoned as R three or R four, written notices required to be sent to all owners within 100 meters of the subject properties. It's noted in this case that since none of the subject lands involved are within either the R three or R four zones, no written notice to nearby landowners was required as per the zoning and development bylaw. Next slide, please. Uh, just a overview of our analysis of the of the application, some positives, neutral neutral comments and shortcomings. Uh, positives are that the proposed severance and lot consolidation has potential to enable higher forms of development and intensification in future along a main commercial corridor by eliminating uh confounding internal lot lines. Uh, the subject properties are centered within an identified commercial hub as per the existing official plan. Uh, neutral comment is that any future development would require building development permit and potential discretionary planning act approvals depending on the nature of any future development proposal. Uh, shortcoming is noted that no immediate proposal for the site has been provided to directly inform specific need on that basis for the law consolidation. Uh, the proposal is deemed as legal and technical in nature to reconcile an existing pattern of use on the site. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the if uh, just going to our analysis now, the official plan has various policies that support the needs of the city's main commercial corridors, of which Brackley Point Road, uh, sorry, that should read St. Peters Road, uh, can be considered as being part of. While section four point three point two B of the East Royalty Master Plan makes the following statement, which applies specifically to the East Royalty Neighborhood Area, it is still a statement that could be cross-applied to additional areas of the city based on first principles and good planning, and that is in order to improve economic viability of commercial centers, consolidation of properties is encouraged to ensure functionally obsolete structures are renovated or removed and a more efficient and intensive utilization of land is achieved. It is noted that the subject properties are all designated as commercial or village-centered commercial under the current official plan and are also identified on the OP map as forming part of the Sherwood Suburban Center, which is intended to function as a local commercial hub for the wider residential mixed-use area surrounding it. Next slide. In conclusion, uh, this is a well-established neighborhood in a mature area of the city where one of the subject properties involved has contributed in regard to housing supply for many years. As noted, the proposed lot consolidation and elimination of an existing internal lot line on the site has potential to unlock further development potential in future along a busy corridor connecting the Sherwood area of the city to downtown. It's noted through land title search that the subject properties have remained under same ownership since at least the 1980s and are expected to remain so into the immediate future. The proposed lot consolidation can therefore be deemed as legal or technical in nature to reconcile an existing pattern of use by merging the merging the location of an existing maintenance and storage building onto the site to which the accessory use provides its uh supporting function. Next slide. And to conclude our recommendation, the planning and heritage department encourages planning board uh to recommend to council to allow for the request to sever and consolidate an approximately 0.14 hectares, 0.34 acre portion of the unaddressed lot identified as PID three eight five five seven five, uh, with abutting property to the west identified as 156 dash 158 St. Peters Road, PID three eight five six five eight, uh, to form one new parcel subject to a final uh PIN survey plan. Uh, so that is a summary of the application, our recommendation, and I'll just note for the board's information that uh the applicant on this application is the same as uh the previous one that was just spoken to for Ellison Brackley Point Road. Uh, thank you, and I'll turn it back over to the chair for any questions and discussion.
Thank you for that. Any questions, or does somebody want to put a?
I do.
Oh, yes, Your Worship.
Um, Da- David, so when you amalgamate thirty-eight fifty-six fifty-eight, thirty-eight fifty-five seventy-five, so that'll get a new PID number, brings up to almost a half acre. And it's on a corridor, it's on one of our corridors that we've identified in the uh upland planning recommendation, three corridors coming into the city. So, potential development could be another Eleanor, because I think that apartment building that's there is the Eleanor, which is owned by the same company that is the previous application. So, what kind of expansion could you look at if if there was to be, you know, some possible expansion or new construction? Not a valid kept question? Is it a valid question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Yeah. So I'm just asking David?
You're asking David, so I'm fine with you asking David that, because I don't have the answer.
Yeah, uh, through the chair, Your Worship, it it's a very valid question. Um, there's a lot of growth potential possibly in the future because of what may be changing in the new official plan. Um, I'll just say at this point in time, the the direct intent of why they've applied for this is just to uh put a maintenance, call it a large maintenance shed, is to put cha- um, transfer which parcel that shed belongs to, because the that shed is utilized for supporting uses on the 156-158 St. Peters roadside and not for the apartment building. Uh, so the owners are, they've, they're approaching this because they're trying to reconcile, uh, basically merge which parcel that shed really should belong to based on a pattern of historical use. Um, but it's not to say that that might not, by adding almost a half acre to the lot fronting immediately on St. Peters Road, that that might not create uh some other potential um possibilities down the road for, uh, it might it might increase the redevelopment potential perhaps of that property, but at this point in time, there's no intent for redevelopment. It's really just um a severance and consolidation for for onsite technical purposes truly.
No, that's why I asked the question. And the shed that there is on PID number thirty-eight fifty-five seventy-five, that's the former Village Community of Sherwood's uh utility shed, which it was purchased back in 2000 by R A Bert Associates. No, I just wanted to know, and that looks good. I'll move it.
Moved by His Worship, seconded by Paul, um, to um accept staff's recommendation, move this on to council. Any questions? If not, all those in favor. Send?
In favor.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. So that concludes. So, that concludes our agenda items. So, I just ask if there is any introduction of new business?
Madam Chair, I missed this because I was going through between slides, Google Map, and just, if Laura can go back to digital page 68 on the Stan Mall, I know it's passed, but the development on that property, you know, we've been told over and over, we need an entry egress, two entries, two enters egresses for developments? Is, is that, again, I'm sure that we'll get, that'll come up during the public consultation, but has that been already vetted through our protective fire services department?
Yes, through the chair. It's going to be sent to Public Works and Fire Services. We do have a turnaround, but there, this has, if you'll see where the connector is, there's potential there for, for a future connector, so.
To the Rhinus property to the south?
So, to the south where the Rhinus property is.
Yeah.
The road will extend through there, and then eventually there'll be a future connection to University, I would assume in a loop that way.
Connection to Sherwood Road.
Yes, Sherwood Road, sorry. Gosh.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I just asked because I know some developers have been meeting this issue.
Yeah.
Two entries, two egresses?
But those are for longer.
Because of the Han Plains fires back two years, three years ago in Nova Scotia.
Yes, your worship, and those are for larger developments and longer roads. This is, this was part of the planned subdivision, so it's just a short stub. The biggest issue here is the, we're just increasing the units, so it was two units on each property, and it'll now be going to 12 units. So, we're going from four to 12, so that's going to be the biggest question, but.
Public Works and Fire will be looking at it too.
Yes, for sure, before.
I just missed it, I was trying to get through the maps. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thanks for that, your worship. Motion to adjourn? Moved by Lee, seconded by Bob, all those in favor? Good night, everybody. Bye.